I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Present.
Trustee Caprio.
Present.
Trustee Rogers.
Present.
Trustee Suisse.
Present.
Trustee Pizmino.
Present.
Trustee Backle.
Present.
There you go.
Present. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Reports of communications from the mayor and other officers. I'll start off with, I'm pleased to share that on Monday, September 14th, our new public access station will launch on Comcast Channel 6. Our residents will be able to find information on the village's services, programs, and community events. Record vehicles will also be shown on the channel. This is another way to communicate with our residents about what's going on in Homer Glen. That's it for me. We'll start with trustees, trustee Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm recording on behalf of the CED, Community Non-Development Committee. I'd just like to remind everybody that our Business Leaders Roundtable meeting with Mayor will be held here at Village Hall on Tuesday, next Tuesday, September 15th at 3:00 p.m. Please visit the village website for details at homerglen.com. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gray. Trustee Backle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report on behalf of the Public Safety Committee. This afternoon, trustee Carlo Caprio and myself met with the village engineer to discuss the next step regarding the Long Run Creek situation. And we've decided to take on this project one step at a time. We will start with clusters of property owners that have stepped up with permission to enter their property along the west end of Long Run Creek. That would be the downstream area, as this would give the residents the best advantage of relief to start. And then we will get more permission. As we get more permission, we'll then begin to move to the east, which would be the upstream area. And we hope to begin this project on the fall on the downstream area.
How many people are still missing?
We have, I think, 162 letters have been sent out. There's been a total of four responses that were no's. There's been 2% that did not respond. We have 48 total yeses, which gives us somewhere in the area of 30% for the total yeses. I received three more today from two residents that live there that I've been working close with. They tell me that they probably have more coming. There's some people that are on vacation that they haven't been able to get a hold of yet. But we do see areas where we have lots and clusters of homes that are together. And those are the areas we're going to try to hit with the hope that some of the residents see us working on these areas, and then they will then join in as they see the progress we're making.
Thank you. Any other?
No, that's it for public safety.
Okay. Trustee Rogers?
I just wanted to reiterate that the Parks Committee is working with the Homer Glen Women's Club to sponsor a Scare Corps Walk here in Heritage Park. You can visit the village's website, scarecorpswalk... Oh, I'm sorry. You can register on the village's website, but specifically at scarecorpswalk event right dot com to get more details. That's all.
Thank you, trustee Rogers. Trustee Suisse?
No, no report, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Suisse. Trustee Caprio?
Yeah, briefly, just with the Homer Community Festival Committee. We are planning, started this, the planning process for the 2021 Homer Fest, which we hope will go off with a bang. We also want to remind everyone that it will be as special a year as it will be our 20th, 20th year of incorporation. So we're trying to make it an exciting year for all of us and hopefully be behind this COVID-19 so we can continue to live our lives and move forward. And then just briefly on behalf of Public Services and Safety, as you can see, it's getting darker earlier, so we just want anybody to remain safe and be vigilant out there and make sure that, you know, everyone stays safe. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, trustee Caprio. Trustee Pizmino?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody this Saturday, the formal event. And I just wanted to thank the village manager and village staff for coming up with these great events for residents. I know, given the circumstances, it's kind of hard, but you guys are taking all the precautions and you're doing it safely. So, you know, once again, to reiterate, we're not at home trembling scared. We're actually going out, getting fresh air. So this is a really nice thing to see out there. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pizmino. Next would be village clerk.
Just a quick reminder for the trustees and the mayor, if you are speaking tonight, remember to speak in your microphone for recordings. That's it.
Okay. You all set?
Yes.
Village attorney?
No report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public safety officials?
Just a quick report, Your Honor. Thank you, everybody. Just a quick reminder to the public about locking your vehicles at night, keeping all your valuables out of the vehicle. All of the car burglars that we've seen, the vehicles are unlocked. It's not like the days of Slim Jimming, okay? The only other time we've seen vehicles, like a window shattered out to take a purse or something out of the car has been like in a park. They're leaving the purse on the seat somewhere it's visible. Sometimes they'll break that window to get it. But if it's a car in a driveway, it's always because the car is left unlocked, keys or a fob are in the car. In addition, like it, who was it that brought up that's getting dark earlier is a great point. Be aware of your surroundings, okay? When you pull up in traffic, leave at least a car length between you and the car in front of you so you have an exit. Same thing in a drive-through line. You don't want to be, you know, right up to the back because there's nowhere you can move your car if you need to maneuver out of the way or something. If something doesn't seem right, please contact the police. If you're not sure of the non-emergency number, it's emergency, call 911, okay? We can figure out if it's an emergency or non-emergency later. 911 is always a safe bet. Yeah, too often people are like, yeah, I thought something didn't look right, but I didn't want to bother you. Bother us, that's what we get paid for, okay? So please, bother us. The number, see if you just want to pass along information, is 815-727-8575. And to keep this community safe, we have to work together, so don't be afraid to reach out. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Village manager?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to share that we are recruiting for a part-time...
That's you.
Muted for a second there. I'll try it again.
Can I say?
Speak loudly.
I know how to handle pressure.
Go green.
Hello? It's still doing it. All right. No, I'm... I'm trying. Just speak loudly. Okay. So I just wanted to announce that we are recruiting for a part-time information technology position within the village of Homer Glen. So if you know anyone or if there's any residents watching and you're interested, please go to our website and there's more information on it. That's all I have.
Thank you. And happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Next would be public comment.
Your Honor, no one has signed up for the public comment proceeding.
Thank you. Next is consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the village board and will be enacted by one vote. Is there a motion to approve the following items? One, the accounts payable for the period of August 28th, 2020 through September 10th, 2020 in the amount of $191,514.17. Payment to the village of Homer Glen's July legal bills from Mahoney Silverman &amp; Cross, LLC in the amount of $12,909. And payment to Tricia Architectural invoices, number 3438 and 3439, for Heritage Park Designs in the amount of $25,886.15. Some of them. Trustee Gray. I'll second. Trustee Caprio. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Motion carries. Legislation and action items. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-035? An ordinance approving, one, a variance to increase the maximum permitted height of a fence located in the corner yard from four feet to six feet. And, two, a variance to permit the solid fence in the corner side yard where fences are required to be 50% open in design for certain real property located in the R3 Single Family Residential District of 12135 Aspen Lane, Homer Glen, Illinois, case number HG 2008-B.
I salute.
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Discussion.
I just have a question for Joe. Are they clear now? Because I know there was some confusion as to the distances. They, they got everything as straightened out.
I'm pleased with this.
Okay.
Is that it? Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-037? An ordinance approving an emergency to reduce the required side yard setback for a proposed in-ground swimming pool from 20 feet to 13 feet. 2020-812, fences, walls, and swimming pools of Chapter 220 zoning in the code of the village of Homer Glen for certain real property located in the R2 Single Family Residential District of 12945, West 184th Place, Homer Glen, Illinois, case number HG 2009B. I salute. Trustee Caprio.
Second.
Trustee Pizmino. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-038? An ordinance approving a special use permit for automobile repair and service pursuant to Chapter 220 attachment to use of both tables for non-residential districts for certain real property located in the C3 General Business District, 14134 South Bell Road, Homer Glen, Illinois, subject to the condition that no outdoor sales or storage shall be permitted on the subject property. Some of them. Trustee Gray.
I'll second.
Trustee Rogers. Discussion.
So I actually have one quick question. There was a note in the plane commission's minutes about if the petitioner had any problem with Davidsons using the front of their property. And I believe the answer was that there wasn't a problem with that. Is that going to be an ongoing thing, do you know? Does Joe agree with that claim, Commissioner?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe that's going to be an ongoing problem, but BG's not heard of it because he was ill. So I'm kind of feeling...
I mean, I know the petitioner said that. I just want to make sure that he understands that if it doesn't come back here, it's landlord thing.
I believe the landlord's...
Yeah, nobody else can use it after the September.
Okay. Are they going to maintain that other location?
No, they will not be.
I think we see that.
Well, when you say they're going to use it for September, I'm confused. Are you talking about just the alterstating because of the COVID?
Correct.
So if we extend that, you know, because I'd like to, you know, I'm talking about extending that the weather is permissible and people could do it safely, heaters or whatever, is that going to be an issue with them?
They're going to move the tables away from the front of the, whatever I see in notes for the new tenant.
So is that a no? I'm sorry, it's carbon here?
It won't block the Homer Glen Automotive Windows that face to the east.
Oh, okay.
And we'll go back out there and reassess the whole area over there. Like I said, my initial comment was just that, you know, I know it's part of our practice, it's part of the minutes and, or the notes that were in here, but that would be a landlord item. If the petitioner does have a problem with that going forward, if he has some resistance on, you know, or meets some resistance on clearing that way, that that somebody needs to take up with landlord, not necessarily in here.
Anything else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-039? An ordinance amending 83-68 of the code, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses by one, Bonfire Incorporated, DBA Bonfire Restaurant, 15905 South Bell Road, Homer Glen, Illinois.
I salute.
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Caprio. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Pizmino.
I must recuse promptly.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-04? An ordinance amending 83-68 of the code of the village of Homer Glen, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses issued within the village of Homer Glen. It is understood that the number of Class D liquor licenses, restaurant, and bar will increase by one. I salute. Trustee Caprio.
Second.
Trustee Rogers. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
I must abstain.
Motion carries. Number six, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-041? An ordinance assigning an available Class D liquor license, restaurant and bar, to Rockwell Brothers Inc., owner Sam LaRocco, DBA Sam's, located in 12320 West 143rd Street, Homer Glen, Illinois. Some of them.
I'll second.
Three. Okay. Discussion.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, it looks like we'll hurt this, so welcome to Homer Glen, to Sam's, and thank you for the vote of confidence in our community for coming in, especially in these auspicious times, so.
I agree. And Mr. Beef will be filling in.
Yes.
Any other candidates? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
I must abstain.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Next, is there a motion to approve standard operating procedure number 16 regarding public access Channel 6?
I salute.
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I could just make one comment. On your desk is a copy of a PowerPoint presentation that we are using that will be uploaded to, actually, it already has been uploaded to Channel 6, so we go live on Monday. This is the PowerPoint presentation that we will, that our residents will see. And in addition to that, we'll also be uploading our village board meetings to the channel as well. So if you have any changes or you have any ideas or things that you'd like to have added, please let Matt and myself know before we go live on Monday.
Okay. And just to clarify, our board meetings won't be live cast, right? They'll be...
No, they'll be taped and then they'll be uploaded the next morning.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-042? An ordinance amending the anti-harassment policy of the village's personnel and housing statement? Some of them. Keith?
I'll second.
Carlo? Discussion.
Do we need to get updated on this? Is this thing...
This is required. This is state mandate that must be updated and adopted by the board. In addition, we have a workshop tonight that Stacy's going to be walking you guys through. It's mandated that all elected officials as well as staff and employees are required to undergo social harassment training. And then a certificate has to be signed off and we submit that information to the state.
Everyone okay with that?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Next would be the workshop. Oh. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Suisse.
Aye.
Trustee Caprio.
Aye.
Trustee Pizmino.
Aye.
Trustee Gray.
Aye.
Trustee Backle.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next would be the workshop, presentation of the State of Illinois mandated sexual harassment training. Stacy, go. She goes.
I already, well, I already saw off. Can you help me handle that? Karen's passing around a folder for, oops, sorry. And assignment sheet that everyone's required to sign. So I appreciate the time. I know that this is not a very exciting subject, so I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. As Karen stated, the state has mandated that we train every employee, elected official, on sexual harassment prevention training. So obviously, why are we here? Last year, August 19th of 2019, the State of Illinois signed into a public act 101-0221 that requires all Illinois employers to train employees on sexual harassment prevention. So, for our employers and for our employees, employers are considered, anyone with one or more employee in the State of Illinois is required to conduct the training. Supplemental trainings are required for bars and restaurants. The employee is defined as useful employees, appointees, and elected officials, interns, part-timers, and independent contractors. So we have to have all of our employees and elected officials trained by the end of December and annually thereafter. As far as new hires go, as it relates to the village of Homer Glen, the policy will be that within the first 30 days of their start date, they will be trained on sexual harassment prevention. For today's training, what we're going to cover is the definition of sexual harassment consistent with Illinois Human Rights Act. Examples of conduct, I know this seems very, that most people think they know what sexual harassment conduct is, but there are things that might be blind spots, may not be as obvious. We'll talk a little bit about the summary of federal and state statutory laws and remedies available, and then we'll talk about our responsibility as an employer. So the definition of sexual harassment, as in, under the Illinois Human Rights Act, sexual harassment is any unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, or any conduct of sexual nature when. There's three categories that people really need to focus on in this area. So the first one is, I'll hire you before you'll be elected if, for a favor, right? The second is impacting whether or not you are promoted, whether or not you get a raise, whether or not you get a specific job. And then lastly, is really around a not hostile work environment. So when we talk about defining sexual harassment, it's not just sexual harassment. It's, are you making it uncomfortable for somebody to come to work every day? Are you not including them in the, in crowd because you're doing things that make that person feel uncomfortable? So there's things that people don't really think about when you think about sexual harassment. You think it's the obvious. Well, it's not always the obvious. It's making sure that it's an inclusive workplace and you're not making it a hostile or an environment that somebody doesn't want to come to on a daily basis. So I'm sure everybody's heard this, with pro quote, "sexual harassment you do for me, I do for you," does not work, right? And then we talked about the hostile work environment, unwelcome sexual advances, sexual favors. One of the things that people don't think about, and I keep going back to this one because people really don't, their mind doesn't go to it, pulling up inappropriate things on your laptop, saying inappropriate jokes. And we'll talk a little bit further about it in later in the presentation, but it's not just the people that are standing there participating. It impacts everyone around you. So what is unwelcome behavior? Sexual conduct becomes sexual harassment when the behavior is unwelcome. And it can be unwelcome, become unwelcome at any time. So the victim does not have to solicit the behavior for it to be unwelcome, touching, massaging, making inappropriate comments to somebody. That's unwelcome behavior. Behavior can become unwelcome even if it starts off as, I hate using the word welcome because it's not welcome. You're sitting there, you're talking, you're joking around, somebody takes it a little bit too far, you've crossed the line, right? And then consent can be revoked at any time, okay? So I've heard people say, well, she was listening to the dirty joke. Well, yeah, but when you cross the line, she told you to stop, you didn't stop, right? So I always tell people, ear to the side of caution, just don't do it. You never know what's going to offend somebody. Somebody could have a coworker that thinks it's okay to be like, hey, hon, hey, babe, hey, this. And then somebody else starts and they're like, yeah, no, I don't like them. So always try to ear the side of caution. I'm not telling people to tiptoe around people, but be a little bit cautious, know your audience, know what's acceptable, know what's not acceptable. The where and the who. So a lot of times people assume that, well, I've left the building, I can do whatever I want. That's not the case. The where, it can be in the office, at an offsite event, at a party, online. And the who. So if we have patrons coming in, vendors, service providers, those folks are also impacted, okay? So again, be aware of your surroundings and make sure that not to assume just because you've left here or it's not a work day that the law still does not go into effect. Somebody could come in and say that I was at a work function and this happened and it made me feel uncomfortable and it would have to be investigated. So victims. I know that there's a misperception that it's always a man to a woman, sexual harassment. That's not the case. Anyone can be a victim of sexual harassment. There's no gender identity, there's no sexual orientation, it could be a third party, it could be a bystander. So I'm sitting there talking to somebody, joking around, saying inappropriate things, and there's a bystander that hears me. That person can file a claim of sexual harassment. So again, and I keep saying this during every single slide, be aware of your surroundings, just don't do it. I mean, you don't know what is going to offend somebody. People know what's offensive. Don't, you know, there's, there's instances that I have that people have been looking at inappropriate things on their laptops. Don't, you know, there's instances that I have that people have been looking at inappropriate things on their laptops. First of all, you should, you just shouldn't be doing that. And secondly, you don't know who's watching you, or you don't know who else sees it. These, there's a number of examples, right? The two that I've highlighted are ones that I think that people kind of, um, wouldn't, that wouldn't be the first thing that would come to your mind when you're thinking about sexual harassment, referring to somebody as a girl, okay, I don't know if I've ever referred to somebody as a hunk, but a doll, babe, honey. You may say that to one person, and then you say it to the wrong person. So just refer to them by their name. Sexual comments, innuendos, and sexual stories. Even if the story is not about that person, if you talk of anything that is off, kind of off color, you're going to eventually find yourself in a little hot water. So keep it very clean. Online and social media, emails, phones, internet. I know that nobody would do this, but you'd be very surprised at how many people have done it. Even if you send a text or an email to somebody with inappropriate pictures, or with sexually explicit messaging, that can be a charge drop against you. Whether it's, even if it's to their personal email, and it's a work relationship, don't do it. Social media. You cannot, you cannot be stalking people's social media and making inappropriate comments. I know that people think that, well, that's just common sense. We'd be very surprised at how many people have done it. So what can I do if I experience this? First of all, you have a right to say stop. It doesn't matter who the person is, whether it's a superior, or whether it's a manager, your first and foremost right is you have the ability to say stop. And if you feel like you are being retaliated against, or somehow impacts your position after you say stop, well, then you have a right to report the incident. There's a number of different ways that you can report, and there, the options are all yours. If you open your green folder. I have outlined. There's two sheets of paper that say what to do if you experience witness or become aware of unwelcome sexual conduct. Obviously, you have an option to contact employer representative, employer representative, whether that be HR, I have my card in here, whether that be the village manager, whether that be a supervisor, somebody you trust, okay? That is, by far, I would recommend your first point of reference, and we will do our due diligence to help you walk through this. The second is State of Illinois has a sexual harassment discrimination helpline, okay? All of the information is stated here. And this helpline, again, is there to help you navigate what you want to do next, give you advice, and then if you want to file a claim, Illinois Department of Human Rights, the process is outlined clearly, and the contact information is on the sheet of paper. And then E, you'll see, again, the process and the contact information is on this piece of paper. Our responsibility as an employer is very, very critical in sexual harassment. Now, as department heads and as people in management positions, employers are liable for sexual harassment that's perpetuated by any member of management, regardless if we knew or not. So as a people manager, if a claim is brought against me, I am held liable because I'm held to a different standard, right? As a coworker or the non-employee harassment, you're only held liable if an employer knew or reasonably should have known that harassment was taking place. So an example of that is if I had a manager that had an employee that was coming to them saying that so-and-so has been harassing me, so-and-so has been harassing me, they've been doing this, and that manager was like, oh, it's not a big deal, you know, they are, just kind of swept under the rug. And it got to that point that that individual filed a claim, and we investigated the claim, and it is found out that the employee had gone to their manager or to whoever they felt comfortable with numerous times, and nothing was done about it, the employer would be held liable. Every single time I talk to an employee, and I know that my position's a little bit different because it's HR, but any manager, people manager that I have had, I've counseled them to coach them in this way. If an employee comes into your office and talks to you and says to you, I want to talk to you about something that's happening at work, my first and foremost coaching to anyone is, if it's not legally risky, it will be held confidential. If it puts the office, the employer, at potential risk, I have to escalate and share it. And that's how I would coach anybody that's a people manager, or anyone that came to you to talk to you about something like that, because you are potentially putting your employer at risk if you do not share something like that. Does anybody have any questions? I know that that was a little. Okay, so as far as employers' responsibilities, what should we be doing? Employment, all employers should have a sexual harassment policy. I have included in your green folders the updated policy. We should be providing training for managers and employees, clear-cut reporting process, which we have not gone through this with the staff yet. Once we do, they will clearly understand what the process, they're going to get the same exact information as everyone here did tonight, if something were to occur like this. Managers and supervisors should monitor their work environment, and then lead by example and model appropriate behavior, pulse checks, see something, say something. The littlest things sometimes can be blown out of proportion, okay? And nine times out of 10, it's just really a coaching discussion. People don't do things, I don't think, intentionally. Sometimes it's like, you think that you're being funny, or you think that you're just building rapport, or, you know, I want to be, you know, I have a manager who's saying, well, how you are, or you have a group, and I want to, like, kind of be in the in crowd. Well, you know, there's, to a certain point, where you're going to be in the in crowd. And then you have to follow the law. As an employer, we would investigate immediately and efficiently. When I say investigate immediately, if there was any potential for a situation where we have to remove an employee based on the complaint, one of the employees would be asked, or both would be asked, to leave until the investigation's completed. Correct the incident. Obviously, this is anywhere from training, to depending on each situation of the loss of job, or, you know, the end of employment, based on the severity of the claim. On that, situations are the same, obviously, everything will be handled on a case-to-case basis. And then at the end of the day, it's really just doing the right thing. It's, we're not talking about people not having relationships with their coworkers. It's just be careful, especially in today's society, because you never, you never know what could come back and kind of haunt you. Any questions?
I guess so.
Okay, that's it. So I would collect, I'm sorry, the last thing is that in your folders, you have the sexual harassment prevention training certification. If anybody can speak that, and turn it, I'll collect it from everyone. This is the certification that will go into all of the personnel titles, and I will also have the sign-in sheet that we will keep for compliance.
Well, if you keep adding going, is there any old business?
I do. I would just like to bring up the outdoor seating that we have, that we're doing as a result of COVID. And if we can maybe look at extending that, based, I'd like it to be open-ended to where we're extending it weather pending. You know, if you, people are, people are okay sitting outside with winter coats on, you know, head in the mirror, watching TV, or whatever the case may be. Once it snows, that's a different story, because it becomes a safety issue in my opinion, and you have to make sure that it's not properly, and things like that. But I'd like it to change, just open-ended to, you know, weather pending. I thought it was December 1st.
Yeah, we did, we already, because we asked Ruben what he would think on this, because it's a lesser restaurant, and we totally direct to keep it open as possible we can. It's pretty good.
So there is no date, right? Because I was asking if there was a date, and I thought that there was a specific date.
December 1st.
I thought it was December 4th, yeah, right now, and we can always extend it.
Yeah, because you have to get it.
But so people, just in the one, on the 1-on-1 scenario, that are like, okay, so can, should, they're thinking about investing in stuff to figure better tents, things like that, to get them through the holder months. So that's, was just my only concern, is, you know, if they, if they do that, and then in December, we can still do it, or we shut it down. I don't know, something to think about.
And I don't disagree with you at all. I would like to see it stay open as long as we possibly can. Depending on where we're at with the COVID, right now, we're allowing that in the inside, and we're allowing it on the outside. So I would think that almost any restaurant owner in a village is going to know when to cancel it, because.
I think maybe what, maybe the entire thing to do is just to make sure that they're aware that it is December 1st, so that they are, if they're comfortable going out and spending more money in different tents, you know, the flat tents, or whatever the case may be, to do that now, you know, if that's the case. And then also, I think, Joseph, they have brought up heaters, you know, and so I'm like, well, then we have to talk to Joe about that, I don't know anything about putting.
Yeah, I've talked to Joe myself about that, this is going to be a case-by-case. They're going to have to show what type of heater they're talking about.
Right, I just.
So if it's approved, and you're talking to, in tents, now you're creating a, you're creating a room. It's no longer an open air.
I agree, that's why it's been making up my six talks until I don't know.
So there's going to be, you know, a couple of different things we're going to look at. If they're starting to put walls on tents, you know, getting them out of there, if they're starting to turn the heaters, it's going to have to be something totally. You know, and the current outdoor seating permits I have, I think there's 12 of them. I monitor them all the time, if they're going to change from the original site plans now, they'd have to come back and amend that, and we'd have to, well, you know, with the fire district, like we do, and then check it out.
Okay. That's all I got.
Well, with that, right now, it is December 1st, and let's see what happens. Hopefully, by that time, we've got a full opening within the restaurant. So you don't have to worry about outside. I mean, right now, the outside's kind of creepy, and if we were doing what I've said, the only thing you guys could do with this plant, so we all got to play it smart. Buy by the other rules, you got to do the masks, you got to enter the six foot. Everything I've heard from health department guys, if they go in and they're doing exactly what you're supposed to do in the first place, they don't allow it. So let's keep doing that, I want everyone to make as much noise as we possibly can. I mean, you got bills too, so. Any other discussion on that, or concerns, or comments?
I just, you know, in December, there are tents that you can have that have specialty heating on the inside, like that's probably Joe's spot now. We're just worried about somebody opening a propane heater inside with the CO2.
You let people kiss him, huh? And we should also, if it gets down to that point, the fire department should still have their statement.
I've talked to them already about, I mean, there's different devices, different types of heaters, it's all going to come down to the individual type of heater, and I'll surely run that through the fire district as well.
But like Ruben said too, you know, sometimes it's much cheaper to do a propane one, and that's how you get people sick and passed on, so we just have to get a list together of what can and cannot be used, and check it out, so.
There's, there's a lot of different products out there, I think we're going to see more and more because of this situation. So on a case-by-case, you know, they're meant to be UL approved according to antlers best, granted, nurses, and I got my problem going around, and check with everybody, and talk to them about it, you know, whatever they want to do.
All right, any other old business? Is there any new business? The next item is an executive session. Is there a motion to go into an executive session for purposes of discussing purchase or sale of real property? 51 LCS 120 slash 2, C 5, potential of pending litigation, 51 LCS 122, C 11. Some move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.